Okay, call this meeting to order. Joint Meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee, Town Council Meeting, Tuesday, May 17, 2022. It's now 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Item number one is roll call. DeeDee?
Here.
Counselor Dow?
Here.
Counselor Adams is present. Counselor Lozal?
Black usually.
And Ms. Bernadine. Okay. So we have a quorum. Consider, item number two, consider accept planning and development meeting minutes of April 28, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Any questions? Changes? No, you were not. So you would have to be abstained. Okay. Any questions? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? One abstained. Two, zero, one. Item number three, discuss review whether to recommend town council approve applying for the One Stop for Growth for the following grants, Mass Works, Mass Development Initiative, Urban Agenda, Brownsfield, and underutilized properties, all 100% funded, whose projects are outlined in the supporting documentation, and allow town manager to sign any related paperwork.
I will.
One second.
All right. Mr. Town Manager or Ms. Dean?
First, Ms. Dean.
Okay.
As I mentioned in the memo, the initial feedback I got from the state was not positive to my surprise. Speaking with the different agencies, I continued to have agencies either reach out, or I reached out to agencies and found that we are actually in the running for many of these, and we're being encouraged to apply. Changes from the initial expression of interest from January application, which I've gotten positive feedback on from the town council, the changes are, for the Mass Works, we were initially going to go for Hamilton Street. We then pursued the infrastructure bill, the RACE grant. We therefore are not going to ask for the Mass Works grant for Hamilton. In the meantime, I was approached by Wynn Corporation, who's handling the 515 K Street project, asking if we'd be interested in applying for a Mass Works grant to complement their housing project there. The development project will run, their parking lot across the street will require them to do RRFBs, and they asked, are there any other safety enhancements or other improvements that could be done? I'm great, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Are there any other enhancements that could be done on town property that we could pursue for the Mass Works grant? We pulled Heather and Eric and whomever else into a meeting about what projects or what items we could include in a potential grant. We determined that the East Main Street water project is happening right now. We just went into design. This is great timing, so we could ask for the portion that goes along 515 K Street that would otherwise be our responsibility. That could be funded on a Mass Works project. That the sidewalk that would be on the opposite of the property, that could be funded. Lighting. And then what we also discussed was, can we improve the fence line? Right? We all know the fencing there, that's where it starts to deteriorate. And then it goes from wrought iron into that whatever gauge metal fence, right? The chain link fence. So I would love to see all of that wrought iron new, and they have said, if we can move it to our property, just to, you know, however far out against the property line on our property, we can fund the fence to go along their property there. So that would be sort of us being able to enhance the look of the property on our property. No covenants, no, you know, worries about whose is it and can they have it, you know, all that stuff. It's ours. And then what we'll also do is, we will include a rail trail access. So now we're hoping that the EDA grant goes through, and if it does, how can we then give 515 K Street, 25 K Street, that part access to the rail trail using the Mass Works funds? And so what we're doing is working with VSC Group and trying to incorporate into the Mass Works grant, the rail trail access from the parking lot, and then again, the paving, the sidewalk, the lighting, the fencing, and two extra safety signs outside of the RRFBs. And so they are still doing whatever's required within their site plan review. They're still doing all of, you know, what's within their costs originally. So for them to be able to get a certificate of occupancy, they have to have the RRFBs installed. They can't not do that. So they will still continue on with what they're obligated to do, and then we will just improve on it. I have with me on the call Sean from Mass Development, or West Mass Development. West Mass Development was hired by Wynn Corporation to write the Mass Works grant on our behalf. And so if we had, and if we have questions that I can't answer, he's here for our help. So are there any questions?
Ready.
A quick question. The fencing you're talking about runs along East Main Street, correct?
Correct.
So you want to make that all back to wrought iron again?
Correct.
Who upkeeps it?
I guess it would be our fence. We would maintain it.
Okay. Now, they just took a lot of that down. I don't know. Was there a reason why that type of fencing went down and wasn't replaced? Do you know?
I asked.
So I know when I was on the Board of Health, one of the issues was safety, because it was falling, even though it fell towards the AO complex area. But we were concerned sooner or later that would fall the other way. I know that was one part of it. I think there was discussion because the way it lighted.
Right.
That, I think the town, I don't know if this town manager or the previous town manager had a discussion with Chip Norton about it, and it finally started being removed. Was it wrought? Okay. So I think there was a culmination of everything.
So you're going to replace the fencing, though, just at the entranceway going down to K Street, maybe? I'm not sure.
Only along East Main Street? So what runs parallel with East Main Street is the only portion we'll replace.
But you won't be putting it back where they have the waterfall, the water thing? You'll be putting it back there, just beyond that?
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dow?
So right now, the fence all by the AO or the town?
AO.
So we need, you say, move it to the town property, so we're going to lose the sidewalk there?
No, there's enough, there's enough width for us to be able to shimmy it out. And Sean, maybe you can speak more to this? How can we, so the question is, will we lose town sidewalk or town road to moving the fence onto our property?
No, I don't see so. So we, and Wynn is working also with VAC, who did the site plan for the 25 K Street project.
Okay.
So we did have just a quick call with VAC as well as Chip Norton, and it looked like that fence is right on the property boundary. So they were hoping to even see if actually VAC moved much at all in order to consider that part of the Mass Works application. So that was part of Woodridge Whitehouse, the head fence engineer for VAC, is going to be looking to complete a fence.
But it sounds...
But no, I don't anticipate any land to be lost.
So the fence between the entrance and the AO to Edward Gas Station, that's where the fence is going to be replaced?
Correct.
And it's already on a property line? We're not going to move it forward to the, because right on the sidewalk, there's no way you can move it more forward to the sidewalk. You say you move a couple of feet or something? So it's on a property line? Why we have to take the responsibility of that fence, paint, labors, maintenance, whatever? They're already responsible for it. If they get any grant to fix it for free, why we have to take the responsibility? Why we don't keep it all by them? Why the town have to take that?
So the town applied two years ago for a Mass Works grant with the AO to try to do work within the property. And the state came back and said, this project is not ready for a grant. It's not clear where the project ends, where Mass Works money ends and where other money starts. It's not clear what the, you know, it was eight million, it was contingent on EDA funds, it was all sorts of details, there was a covenant, and it was, it was in my opinion, it was just more complicated than what a simple Mass Works grant could be. This is a town grant. It's not co-mingled with a private grant. It's strictly on our land, and so if we want to do it, it's an opportunity for us. If we don't want to do it, then we can leave that piece out. I personally would love to see it done. I think it would beautify that area, and if we can pursue public funds to potentially improve on a property that's already investing some $43 million in housing development, by all means, I think it's well worth everyone's, I think I would support it. I don't know if you as a town, as a body, support it, but I think it's the right direction.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, I understand because the grant for the town, not for the AO. Why we don't get the grant, we do the fence, and we give it back for a dollar to be responsible for it? Because technically, it's protecting somebody fall on his property, and that's his responsibility the way the wall is walled up. You know, it's down the road, there's more money put in for the town to maintain, is that, it's only, what, seven, eight people on the DPW? How much they can do? I mean, it's a lot of work for them. I'm trying to see a future, get some work off the town responsibility. I mean, he can afford to maintain that fence and keep it in good shape. I know where he come from. You know, we got the grant, we can put it out, we sign whatever, but we do commitment, we can give it back for a dollar. I don't know if that makes sense to you. I don't know if you understand.
It...
That's a business language out there. We do that usually sometime different way. I don't know if that apply for the town too? You can, to get the grant, fix the sidewalk, whatever, and then you make Chip Norris own it with the dollars, and then he's responsible for all the maintenance and everything in the future.
I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's the direction the town would be recommended to go by its town attorneys. I would be concerned because we're now ensuring it is on public land, it is public, you know, will be public property at that point. For us to then say, we give it to him? I don't know. I guess I would need an attorney's opinion on that.
I'm not sure, I mean, just, I'm not sure if getting a Mass Works grant, we can even give that, we work on it, and then we can even give that to a private entity. Not really sure.
Sean?
Yes, can you chime in? Is that okay? Sure? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, tell him, yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to say, with the experience that we've had with Mass Works grant at the Level Mill complex, I believe all the work that we're discussing, the application will be within the public right of way. But if for whatever reason, there's work that extends the private land, which we should know of course from VAC, and I don't anticipate that to be the case, but what we've done is, the private land will be transferred under a construction easement with the town while the Mass Works money is being spent, and upon the work being completed, it will then be turned into either a long-term easement or adoption by the town as public infrastructure. And then on the attack side of that, it could be a maintenance agreement with the private landowner to maintain that, but it will be transferred back to the private landowner.
Okay, so maybe to the counselor's point of, maybe we can come up with a maintenance agreement, but there's no transfer of property?
No, I don't, yeah, I don't mean like that, but the fence, he can be responsible for, I mean, isn't it on the plan approval? They'll have to have a fence maintained with the planning board? Didn't they put that on the plan?
Site plan? I think the site plan just required the crosswalk and the hour of these and the sidewalk right there. I don't know about the fence.
I'm going to check because, you know, I think it's on it.
I heard that the priority with this Mass Works would be on the pedestrian safety, so I think if there's any hesitation or concern about wrought iron fence, if we're a fence, I would think that the corrective, what we're really looking for are things like additional signage, potential flashing signs each west of the crosswalk, so they're going to notice the driver, and then also maybe some garbage and land casing to have a clear sightline for that crosswalk.
Yeah, I actually think it was me who begged for the fence while we're out there, saying, let's get this done. Yeah, this would be a good contribution, because I, for myself, it's like, you come upon this beautiful property, but it's juxtaposed to the chain link fence, and, you know, you could further beautify and really make it more dramatic, right? If it was all wrought iron, and rather than wait for them to do it, if we had the opportunity to have any say in it, this is our chance. It's kind of like, I feel similar with the Sign on a Facade program, right? If I see a business that could be promoted more or work could be improved with the Sign on a Facade money. So, because I came out with that.
So, again, like, you know, you're not sure if it's on the plan already, have to be done by them, and now we're going to take the opportunity to do it through the grant? They're going to give you some offset, like something back branded somewhere else for the money you're going to spend on the fence? Because that's a lot of money on that fence to spend. If they're responsible for it, as well, if we're going to do it through the grant, take some back somewhere else?
Again, I can't hammer home, I, as an outsider coming in, I think that what's happening over at the Southbridge Innovation Center is the best thing that you could have ever had happen. You have somebody investing heavily in not only the Co-Generation Plant and the Hotel and Conference Center, but now you have these housing developments that are, I know that 25 K's had its issues going through permitting, but in the end, you're going to have high-quality new housing where you didn't before for, you know, tens of millions of dollars that you would have never otherwise seen. So I don't think that asking the state for a million dollars towards public infrastructure surrounding it, that includes a fence to complement their business, is out of line in any stretch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKee?
First of all, I just want to say that I do support the changes, because that sidewalk is the one, I've seen people walking there, it's very difficult for them to walk, especially with traffic, the speed of the traffic through there. So I would like to see it improved. I don't know about the fencing, I guess maybe it's an historical thing for people to see that all iron, the iron fencing there, but the sidewalks definitely need replacing. The only thing that I'm questioning is, is it a wise idea to change grants midstream? I mean, we've already put in for Mass Works for Hamilton Street.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see Hamilton Street, Mass Works initially proposed was to resurface off Hamilton, and why wouldn't we use the RACE grant for East Main instead of switching midstream to change grants? I've also noted that we are using, there is a proposal to use some of our funds on East Main and Chapter 9 funds for East Main. So that's my only concern, and I fully support changing that. I think it's a good idea, especially the sidewalks. I'm just not sure we should change midstream on the grant proposal. I think we should leave Mass Works for the Senate, or this, and there's the RACE grant.
Ms. Dean.
So the order of operations for the new One Stop for Growth is, you in January submit up to five projects that you would like to see the town complete, and then you get feedback over the next however many months, and then in June, you apply for the grants. So we have never applied for a Mass Works grant for Hamilton. We just expressed interest in applying, and then we switched gears because the first discretionary funding through the infrastructure bill came our way. And we advocated, unlike many other small municipalities or governments that are not pursuing these discretionary funds through the infrastructure bill, you should be very proud of yourselves that you went for one of these grants, and you applied for the Hamilton Street for 10 million, which is far more than what Mass Works have traditionally been funding for projects in the past. So it was actually a better fit for Hamilton Street, and because it was historically disadvantaged, according to the infrastructure bill, qualifies as historically disadvantaged and can be 100% funded. And so you went for the RACE grant for all Hamilton, now you have no project for Mass Works. Wynn Corporation came forward and said, here's this idea.
You're all set. Counselor Stevens?
Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions for you to pick. First off, I think the idea of putting a fence back up there is probably a wise thing, because we have actually seen people go through the existing fence, or the one that was taken down, and end up in ruin, and kill themselves. So we don't, we don't sound like that. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be on public property, if we can work out some deal, some way, that, because I think, I kind of agree with what Joe was saying, that I think it does make some sense that they maintain it, but I don't really have a huge problem with it being on public property, as I'm just done with. Do we have any idea, if we were to do that, did you take a look, even at least a rough estimate, of what maintenance would require? Cost-wise over time, how long we would need to do it, that kind of stuff? I'm glad that we wouldn't need to do anything in the near future probably, but, so we might be a good idea to figure out what that might be? I mean, we saw that part of the issue that we were talking about the fence there is that there was no maintenance for using it, and that's why it was falling apart. That was the issue. Also, I was curious about, when you were talking about using the Mass Works grant to extend the water line there, how far down would we be able to go? Would it have to stop at essentially the K Street intersection and turn in the K Street to go to the property? Or would that be the end of the Mass Works line, and then we would extend it with some other grant funding the rest of the way down East Main Street? Or how would that, how would that work? Or could we, or could Mass Works fund the line all the way down East Main Street with just a connection to K Street? How would that work?
So I think we weren't necessarily going beyond what was just in front of K Street, just as a, this is our, it's an 11th hour idea, you know, a very last minute application. We're trying to package something that we think will be a strong application, and it was Heather that pointed out that, oh, not only could you do the safety enhancements, but you could also potentially take on the portion of the project that's right here. So we're already in design for the water line on East Main Street, so this would just be another way of supplementing the town's funds. So we are already planning on replacing that section of water line, because it's already undersized. So with that, this is an idea of, look, if you're going to get this money, and you're going to go for this money, why don't you go for the water main at the same time to make the project a little bit more expensive, and you do it the whole length of their property, which is quite extensive, so it's quite a good portion of the water main, is what that is.
So we wouldn't have to stop at K Street?
Yeah, it doesn't have to stop. We would just use a different funding source, you know, which you were already funding the project, so you're just supplementing your addition to your funds. So Sean, just to verify, right, we're doing the water also within the Mass Works?
No, not that I heard, because we would, I hold the engineering from McClure in time. And it was ordered, and I keep talking.
So we weren't, we aren't able to fund the water itself, but we're funding the then reconstruction of the road because of the water project?
Oh, okay. That's not what I...
No, it's less, it's not what I'm thinking. When it would be the, the priority would be sidewalk improvement, just because of the timing of those upgrades, and they have a stage that we're surveying them right now for the road upgrade, that it might be a little super difficult with the Mass Works application.
Okay, so what we can include of the water, the East Main Water Project, is the paving, and then we will also do the sidewalks to Mass Works at the same time, the lighting, and then the fencing. Are we all in agreement?
Ms. Dean.
What I did promise Julie Holstrom from WBDC that I will mention tonight is that, if anyone's aware, there's a $2.2 million earmark that was made for Mass Works toward Southbridge. That's a, that's future funding for Southbridge towards a project at the AO. And so what Julie's asked Wynn Corporation to do is incorporate some of the language from the Master Plan that will tie back to sort of what you applied for two years ago, so that Mass Works understands that this is maybe the first of what will be a couple grant rounds to help improve the infrastructure at the AO campus.
And I'm also making a lot of reference to the EDA application earlier this year, as well as broader redevelopment activities at the AO.
Okay, which ties into, ties into something I was wondering about. So where does that stand as far as, because that, part of that grant issue, I remember when we were talking about it originally, was the fact that there might be an issue with the state because of the fact that that's all private property. And I remember we were talking about what we were going to do as far as the water lines and stuff, going through the AO parcels, and whether or not it was, or whatever it was, or paving, I don't even remember exactly what it was about to go on, but that it was still private property, so it would be a problem, a problem if public funds could be private property.
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So Michael and I are being asked to meet with WBDC and Franklin Realty Associates sometime in the next few months to start the conversation early, so that we can address what the potential covenant would look like. I expressed my concerns about the last covenant. To me, the language wasn't strong enough for the town, and so they'll reevaluate that, they assure us they'll do whatever they need to, to make it comfortable for us and our attorneys as a public, is public land, public funds going to public land?
Okay. And also, you mentioned the idea of doing the rail trail access up there. Is there any way that we could tie in actually putting or rebuilding that Morris Street rail trail bridge into this project, into the Mass Works grant?
That would be the EDA grant. And so if we are awarded the EDA grant, at that time, we will go into full design, and the design would walk out those options based on, and then every time would make decisions based on cost estimates. You have to, in the Mass Works, you have to be further along than you could be. You don't have the design for that bridge, so you couldn't do it.
Okay. Okay, I guess I said that at the moment.
Anybody, oh, yeah. Sorry, Mr. Chenier, go ahead.
I called a little bit, Counselor Dow was, I believe, correct in asking that Franklin Realty pick up the responsibility of maintenance and repairs. The issue on that fence, that was one of Alvin Petro's first job coming into Southbridge, and that was one of his pet projects, if you want to call it. It was a constant repair and upkeep because of the wrought iron. He used to send in crews, and they used to individually change the spares of the wrought iron as they deteriorated and rotted, and then the other thing is the accidents. You will see that section of cyclone fence that is there, most of that has been taken out over the course of time of car accidents. And the reasons that the wrought iron wasn't put back there, I truly believe is the cost that it was, put it back up, up back up the way it was. And over the course of time, you, if you lived there most like, like I have, it was a summer project for the people at the American Optical Company Maintenance, of sanding and painting and priming and keeping the upkeep of that wrought iron fencing. You will see over the course of time that the deterioration of the fence, of the wrought iron fence, was because of the lack of maintenance by Franklin Realty. And I think that if you, in all honesty, look, the section that was taken down from Lenzville Gate to the main plant, it was not for aesthetic reasons, it was because of maintenance issues. They've done nothing over the course of time. The other big thing that I see is with us assuming liability for that fence, right now, all that liability falls on Franklin Realty, and shame on them if they don't want to maintain it and fix it. I understand they're putting a $43 million project up there, which I wholeheartedly support, but that $43 million project also benefits the bottom line of his company. They're not doing that just to be nice to Southbridge. It's great that they're doing it, but it's for an investment. So at very least, I think if you move forward and do this project with the fencing, number one, we have to realize that we're adding a significant burden for a few months on DPW for maintenance of that fence, and the liability, and I think at minimum, we should agree with Counselor Dow that we try to get into some maintenance with Franklin Realty.
Ms. Dean.
My suggestion might be is when, if you are so lucky to be awarded, at that time, when you go to accept the award, you make a contingent on creating a maintenance, you make the, accepting the, or installing the fence, or furnishing and installing the fence contingent on securing a maintenance stream with Franklin Realty.
Very, very easy, good. Okay. Mr. Chenier, you got anything else?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, real quick, Counselor Dow, yes, I'm, no, go ahead.
I'm not sure if the state, the grant, if they see that language, am I, you know, have a problem with it? I don't know. I don't know. The town should have a private agreement with Franklin Realty on the side before, okay.
My opinion is, you were at the award stage, they've already done the vetting, I don't think they'll be deterred by it.
Okay. Couple of things, I appreciate you talking about the MassWorks grant, the 2.2. You know, the covenant was something that we, before your time, before the current town manager's time, we took that as, as gold, even though we did ask a lot of questions, but the council did support it. So I'm glad if we can make it a little tighter. Specifically, we have police officers or patrols that are going through that area. And maybe that could help out in the future for us on the current covenant that, that was agreed upon two years ago, I think it was. Anyways, my question, Ms. Dean, is you interpreted the feedback as initially not positive, yet these other experts said, let's do it, maybe because of their field, specific field? What was the concern of the person or persons that didn't give you that positive feedback?
So you can read the expression of interest. The way I read the expression of interest, I didn't get the sense that we should go forward. When I then got on a follow-up call later and they walked through this, they said, don't be, don't be discouraged, yes, this might be a different agency, go, you know? And so they kind of helped me see that it wasn't, it wasn't things we couldn't work through.
Okay, thank you. The, Ms. Dean.
We have Greg Cormier here, I don't know if I'm going to give him an opportunity to talk to the portion of the One Stop for Growth that addresses the 205 Main Street property?
I was actually going to get to that, I was just going, I was.
Grant?
Yeah, well, I, no, no, we're all doing it one lump sum, it's just, I actually got some questions as far as that, each one, not every one of them, but I know we've concentrated on the MassWorks. All right, so the current work that, or the current agreement that the town council had with Franklin Realty about the 25, was it 35 K Street? Was it 25 to 35 K Street? Now, the things that we had agreed on as a town council to cover a certain amount for them to be able to apply for certain exemptions, or Franklin Realty applied for certain exemptions, is this all part of that? Because some of the things that we talked about was new sidewalks, the cost was new sidewalks, we covered the cost of curbing.
Exactly. So does it make up not understanding the question?
Well, we're applying for this grant, but we also agreed as a town, we applied for this grant, but we also, last year, we, as a town council, said, we're willing to give you up to $400,000 of kind of in-kind funds. And a lot of that seems to be what's in this grant application for. Is that going to hurt us with this grant application? Or is it taken away? Or we'll have to come back to the town council and say, because I asked a specific question at lunch one day, is there something else the town council is going to have to provide in the near future? Because I believe the DHC, our DHCD didn't initially approve those apartments.
Uh, so for the Lytec, for the low income housing tax credits, is that what we're talking about? We end up having enough skin in the game? Will that hurt well? Who do those tax credits go to? They go to Franklin Realty, and I would think that they would have thought this through. Angela, you're on the phone, can you speak to that?
Hi there. I didn't fully hear the question, but it's in regard to tax credit, can you repeat the question?
The question was, how, the town was asked to have skin in the game for the housing tax credits? And so the town gave them $400,000 in permit waivers?
No, in-kind.
In-kind waivers?
Work, yeah.
In-kind work? And it was part of this work that we're doing right now in the MassWorks. So whether, whether we're paying for it locally, or whether we're paying for it through MassWorks, does that affect their ability to get tax credits?
Oh, I see. So for, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So I guess I can speak a little globally. So for tax credit proj, for low-income tax credit projects in Massachusetts, there is typically a sort of requirement from the Department of Housing and Community Development that specifies there needs to be some sort of local contribution to the project. I know for example, the most recent funding application direction that they put out, they should be put out, they do this requirement. And that being said, not a, it can look like a number of different local commitments, I think PG projects evaluated on its own. I don't want to speak for this project specifically, I don't know how things would be interpreted, and I don't know what, I thought actually there's a one working on the 25 Main Street application thus far that has been solely MRA advancing that application, but I just want to be careful not to speak to anything, but I think that my point is just that they will, for a Lytec project, they will want to see a local position of some sort.
And so are we hurting Franklin Realty's ability to get the Lytec credits if we approve the MassWorks grant?
That I, I don't, I don't know how that would be interpreted.
Okay, so that's a hard, we don't want to put, obviously, a developer in a position that would compromise themselves.
But my concern here is, yeah, so we apply for this grant.
Something that we can follow up with, like, really quickly and get too many things we need to get ironed out there. So just so I understand, that for that project, the town was doing a sort of in-kind contribution? Did I hear that right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and that was for, you, you doing three improvements?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
My, my concern is that.
Okay, so I'll, so we'll put that on our list too, to follow up with and get a statement back.
Okay, hold on, let's hear from the chair.
So my concern here is that if, if we apply for this, which, and I don't know how the town council will vote, but this is a priority I would see in our area as far as the town's concerned, then DHCD finds out, hopefully I'm saying the right entity, but DHCD finds out that we just utilized MassWorks grant to pay for our in-kind donation obligation, that's really no skin in our, in the game from the town account of Southbridge.
Do you?
Yeah.
So if I could just play devil's advocate, I would say, apply, let them iron it out. In my opinion, DHCD, who is by grantor for the, for the CDPG and knows us intimately, they know we are one of the poorest towns in the Commonwealth. They know that all of our low, moderate income statistics. And so I, they may lay favor, you know, they might commend us for pursuing other funds rather than having to fund it openly.
Let's, let's hope, there's always the hope. So the next question I have is, with the design and construction, maybe a little off topic, design is happening now, construction is happening when? I forgot Heather, what you said. Construction for?
East Main Street.
East Main Street, yeah, what is that?
East Main Street is still a year out, and with where we are right now with pipe, it may take longer than that.
Okay, thank you. The parking lot across the street, now that's AO property. We're not paving that, right? But we're looking at putting a sidewalk on that side between exit and entrance, I'm assuming, with this MassWorks grant?
So if you've seen their site plan reviews, they have landscape buffer there.
Oh, that's right, they do.
It's totally different than what it looks like today, so yes, I think it has more sidewalk.
I just didn't know, when I heard, I remember the buffers, but I didn't know if that, now we're going to add a sidewalk in between the, the entrance and exit of it.
Haven't seen the.
All right, I'm just asking the question because it sounds like there's two entities.
Yeah.
Let me finish up real quick. The lighting, you're talking about lighting in here as well, there's a flashing beacon, I think that was part of the agreement as well. For us to either, I know in the initial planning, there was a flashing beacon there because the concern was the traffic flow and people walking from those, that parking lot to, to the AO or the K Street. Is that also?
They're funding that to be able to get the certificate of occupancy standard in next year's construction.
Okay, so what lighting?
Oh, so it would be street lighting.
Just the street lighting? Okay, all right.
And like we talked about, the two traffic safety enhancements, the two signs before the base sign.
Not trying to get into the planning board's business here, I just, my concern is, all these sound familiar from a few months ago where we're doing in-kind. I would recommend if they, the fence was to be pushed out, but, you know, given to Franklin for maintenance, that the sidewalk obviously be placed there, but make it wide enough to put a barrier for the walkers, because that's the problem is, there really is no curbing, and there's no safety issue whatsoever.
The curbing is, the plan for that road, that road is extremely wide, those lanes are extremely wide, and that's why people go faster than they should on it. You're going to put granite curb, a wider sidewalk, just like every other location in the town, like Main Street and everything else, it will, the traffic speed will slow down because the lane width will get narrower.
Okay.
It's, that's part of traffic management, is we know we have an excess of speed problem on that road, that's why people go off the road, jump the curb, which there isn't really a curb there now, but if you put a true six-inch curb, it won't be as easy to jump, number one. And if you're not going as fast, number two, speed management with a skinnier lane width, not a 13-foot lane width, which is what it is, which gives people the perception that they can go 50 miles an hour. You can't, 30 mile an hour road.
So that's why I'm recommending, even though they shouldn't, they will, and that's what I'm saying, there's constant accidents over there hitting that fence, that you should put a barrier up over there, but I know that's, that's planning.
The maintenance headache.
Got it, got it. I'm just saying, okay. All right, let's see here. Next was the.
A.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just the $400,000 commitment to town in-kind services that is tied into that project. I believe Franklin Realty has some responsibility to do certain things in lieu of that $400,000. I don't know quite what they are, sidewalks and stuff like that. With us doing the fencing and the sidewalks and the lighting, flashing lights, is that something that's already in the plan that Franklin Realty has to do? And if it is, why are we going to pay for that? Or is there something else that we can have Franklin Realty do in lieu of us paying for those projects if it's in the plan?
I think Angela had mentioned it before, was the fact that to receive this type of the loans or the tax credits, I should say, we have to, as a town, show that we're willing to also provide a certain percentage of funds in there as well. And that is something, instead of waiving all the permits for it, up to 400,000 or 365,000, I forgot what it was initially, we said, okay, maybe not waive the permits, but maybe we can do some work here, since we're already doing work on East Main Street that can account for the work itself.
So instead of maybe the $400,000 that they get a planning board, as written into the plan, Franklin Realty's responsibilities for A, B, C, D, E, with us doing some of that roadwork project, sidewalk project, and fencing project, do we take some of that planning board stipulations away from Franklin Realty? You know, that was written into the plan that they would normally have to pay for?
Ms. Townmaster?
I may be going out on a limb, but I think there's two different requirements. When they're going into certain permits, certain requirements, what was happening last year, it was going to be mutually beneficial, in my opinion, to be doing this work on East Main Street. So what we were trying to do is, rather than give additional monies towards the project as in-kind, as our commitment to them getting the MassWorks grant, we were trying to say the investment that we're making down there in the sidewalks and the other infrastructure should be counted as in-kind contribution. It's definitely that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Any other, anything else? I was gonna bring up just a couple, go ahead, Councilor Marquardt.
Uh, thank you. So just looking at the number five, the other ones, they look pretty good. I have no problem with them. Number five is, you want to fix up the 205 Main Street to add sprinklers and a commercial kitchen, is there, do you have some plan there or something that they would want to add a commercial kitchen?
Ms. Cormier, or Ms. Dean?
May I, may I just ask, are we done with the?
Yeah, we, we can bounce back and forth, yeah.
Should we let them go off the call?
Yeah, I just need their last names.
Oh, okay, so Angela Guile, is it?
Yep, yep.
And Sean Donnelly?
O'Donnell.
O'Donnell.
Close, but all right, okay.
Forgive me. Name's so important, I will never be a part of it.
Well, if anybody else has any other questions on number two, we can move.
All right, so thank you very much for your time, guys, I'm going to let you go, okay?
Number three? Number four? Councilor Steves?
I have one quick question for number four. I'm just to clarify, what properties are you talking about, the brownfields?
Properties that may be in tax title. You could check with the treasurer's office?
Because there's a bunch of properties down there that probably are brownfields that as far as I know, never been looked at.
So this is a chance for us to take a deeper dive and see what of those properties in tax title might be a good fit for potential development.
How many properties do we have down there that are brownfields?
I don't.
DeeDee, did you have on number four?
On number three.
Number three, I'm sorry, go ahead, number three.
Was the Southbridge Fest funded by the Downtown Partnership at one time?
Um, I have a book downstairs that talks about the festival, that which talked about some of the funders, I could look, but I'm not sure.
Okay, no, I just saw that you were putting that into the thing to consider reviving elements of. I just didn't know if it was already being funded by the Downtown Partnership, why are we going after that again? I guess that's my question.
I'm not aware of a street festival happening, so I was trying to revise something that happened in the past.
They usually shut everything down over here?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then also on East Main. But I thought it was Downtown Partnership is the one who.
I think they were, because I remember them doing it on Main Street a couple of times. It had happened several years.
I think there was probably a stop doing that because I think it became, that, that organization became null and void in the town. So I'm thinking now that Southbridge Business Partnership took over where they left off, you know, with a big gap in between, maybe that's something that they can also take a look at down the road as they grow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Townmaster?
I'll take the crack at it, just trying to shed a little bit more light on Councilor Steves' question. What we're trying to do, we've talked extensively, there's some properties that appear to be coming towards the town and that they don't. But we often feel that they may be there when they land in our lap. And there is a timeline with which we have to act to determine whether we're going to hang on to these properties or try and sell them. So what we're trying to do is due diligence upfront, position ourselves that we could get appropriate money, so if one of these lands in our lap, we could go out and try and get the necessarily, necessary environmental testing or other investigation of the properties so that we can even make a determination whether we want to keep it, sell it, or what. But it's tricky because they aren't in our possession, but there's a substantial likelihood that one or more could come in. And so without causing a problem with the common owner or anything, we want to be prepared in the event that we do wind up with a property.
So if we were going to do that, and how long would we have to actually end up obtaining the property by tax title before, before we lose the grant?
Well, I think there are some things that we can do, we've talked about it with some of our council, with, associated with tax taking and our real estate, what some of the options may be. But when we take a property in tax title, there is a short window, about 180 days, where we can decide whether or not we ask the court to take it back and try and force the person to make good. There may be reasons we get it and realize we don't want to hold on to it, because it could be a liability. So we're just trying to get ourselves a position that we would have money in the event one of these comes in, we could go off and do some further exploration of the property. So there isn't a specific property there, but we're aware that some have, are approaching that status. And that's really all I think. And we don't have one yet in possession of a property.
Would it have, would it have to be for Globe Village? Because I mean, we've got tax title properties in various parts of town and other places or.
around town that are potentially brownfields or various kinds.
This brownfield project, or this brownfield project is through Mass Development. Mass Development's whole goal is to do, um, you know, economic development, generate jobs, generate, you know, and so we know that the Globe Village is an area that we'd like to see grown. Um, and that's why we're choosing it strategically.
Councilor Kennedy, I'm sorry, thank you, number five.
That's all right. Uh, just maybe if you can just give us an overview of number five.
Sure, Ms. Dean or Mr. Cormier?
Sure, so as I know, two oh five Main Street's been for sale for a while and we got lots of calls, uh, um, across the spectrum from, I heard rumors about-
There's no Dairy Queen, let's call that out.
Best Food, yes, I heard rumors about Dairy Queen. Um, I heard, uh, rumors about, you know, it was, it was going to be a tear down if it didn't get, uh, vac- if it didn't get, uh, a new tenant soon enough. And so, um, I had been, um, I got a call from, from the bank directly a few times asking if there's anything we could do to help, um, of the process along. You know, these things are really out of our hands, these are private business, um, transactions. But we just kept, you know, putting the word out there and, um, and Greg Cormier came forward and rescued the property. Um, understanding that he did look at the different economic development tools that are out there. I did, I did that, um, that grid at the bottom of the page that shows the different investors of recent, they all qualify for the opportunity zones. Um, that property is literally two parcels away and does not qualify. So he has no economic incentives, um, he's doing this, you know, on his own. And so I, you know, looking at the different ways you can compare why we would help this property versus others, that they, they have these different opportunities, he does not. I went to, uh, the, as soon as he purchased the property, he called the town. The town then called Mass Development and got on the phone, MOBD, Mass Development, whoever, and said, okay, this one doesn't qualify for, for any tools, what do you suggest? And someone said, go for the underutilized properties program. And so we met him with the building inspector, the, um, our team, uh, from, um, economic development and planning. We talked about what we want, and what we want is to see a restaurant. Not sure what Mr. Cormier's number one priority would be. But, uh, we are asking that he please consider it as something because he has the ideal spot for parking, because we need restaurants in town. And to help, um, encourage that, we're, we're willing to go for the grant for the commercial kitchen and for the sprinklers, which would be required through the whole building. So therefore it would be a two hundred ten thousand dollar ask. Um, and that's, um, a quote based on some numbers that Greg got.
Yeah, that's ballpark.
Walmart, I haven't typed in the numbers up yet.
I got involved because I heard it was gonna be torn down.
Yeah.
Looked at that property, I grew up here. So I felt terrible, I said, geez, there's something that could be done. I kept waiting to see for itself, and it didn't. So I finally, uh, I talked to Peg. At one point, I'm not sure if I talked to you right before I purchased it or not, or right after, but, um, I had talked to someone, to, actually the broker that was handling it. I mentioned there may be some help, the town really wants to save this, and I go like, so it became a labor of love instead of using my brains up.
Appreciate it, thank you. Well, we thank you for not doing that.
So anyway, that's, that's what happened, I ended up purchasing it. And, uh, so I'm not opposed to a restaurant, I'm still open-minded on different ideas. I just wanted it to carry itself, be able to be productive for the town. And that's where I'm at. And then Peg mentioned, uh, and she's been very helpful, the whole crew. And the building inspector's very good. And so we just started discussing things, and I'm not opposed to that. I think there's some very good ideas from them. And, uh, I wanted to see if it's something that we could try to work towards. To do something, I want to save it no matter what, but is it, is it cost-effective? This is what we have to look into. And I know, um, it hasn't been quite two years, so technically, you know, I was told I could open those offices. But there's so much office space in town already, uh, although it is a prime location for that. So I'm not opposed to that either. Then I thought about apartments, do some really nice apartments. And we just started, started discussing maybe, uh, possibly some kind of a brew house or that type of thing, a restaurant. And then nice, very nice apartments upstairs. So that's kinda where we are right now. I'm open to suggestions, I'm open to ideas. I've had a couple of phone calls, we've had discussions about other things. There may be a bank that's interested, um, from out of town. But I like the idea of the restaurant, I know the town needs a good restaurant, uh, in the area. And, uh, so I'm happy you're willing to look into that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Zer, anybody have any other questions?
No, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
Just to assure the town, I know that we took, we've taken risks in the past on buildings. And for instance, the one eleven Central that did not get leaned in time to be able to, um, take those funds back before it was, uh, sold. This would be something that we would lean immediately to make sure that if for some reason he couldn't stick with it and he sold, that we would at least get back the funds to return them to the state or if the state deemed them, you know, allowable to stay with us. We would have a vehicle to be able to, um, to be able to take those funds back. Um, you know, you don't want to ever see some situation where it's viewed as opportunistic, where for instance, someone can sell and they've now pocketed a profit of an extra two hundred thousand dollars because of this grant. So avoid that at any cost. Um, and then, um, like I say in the, um, in the memo, if it goes to a restaurant, this is excellent timing, should we get those liquor licenses, the additional liquor licenses from the state that they could apply for one of those liquor licenses? And then it would be on the onus of the business to prove that they are, uh, primarily food. Uh, and if we suspect that for some reason they're not and they're acting more as a bar, then we could, at that time, we can ask for the funds back immediately.
That was my question to you, about the licenses, okay. Councilor Dow.
Thank you, to you. Just to suggest, a nice restaurant and, uh, the breakfast and bed up there down on apartment. I mean, you have, you have a trail coming downtown, it's gonna be beautiful as you think. You know, you don't wanna rental property over the, the restaurant and have a tennis. I'm a landlord myself and I know how it is, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. I think bed, bed and breakfast, one day, see you laters. You know, just take that money, let him walk with the bike, you know, I think that's a better idea.
Get out of town, then.
I thought about the bed and breakfast, and I think it would, it would, it's a very nice building for that, but I don't think there's enough draw to be able to do it to be honest.
It's coming, it's coming. I lived twenty-three years in town and I know, uh, that's why I don't move out of town. I know, I know we have a good future, it's coming. I can see if the trail is gonna be, uh, uh, already is approved and then the AO, the, the kayaking down there, you know, we're gonna be water for the public to do kayaking, walking and all that. I, I think it's coming, you know, I can see the future. If we continue going the way we're going, I think we're gonna get there. I mean, I'm not saying tomorrow, but a few years down the road, you're gonna see Southridge is different completely what it's right now.
I agree with you. The time element, I might differ on that a little bit. We'll have to see what the economy does. I think we're heading for some rough winters.
Thank you. Cal, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm positive on the town, I've been here all my life, I was born here. So, and I've stuck with it, this is where I've done all my work. And, um, so I, I do believe in the long-term future of Southridge, I really do. There's a lot of improvements that are coming. I think I was telling Peg, our main drawback at the time was, we never had access to main highways. Mass Pike, eighty-four. But the improvement on twenty made a big difference. I would have liked to see it connected to the Mass Pike, but that's not gonna happen probably. Well, maybe it would because of what's happening in childhood, but I, I really believe in the Southridge. It's the only thing that's helped.
With the Amazon there, open there, now they're probably gonna do the exit.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, especially they don't have to put, uh, body labor, labor, just a tag, fast line, you know, they don't have to spend more money, only open the exit.
Exactly, that would make a huge difference for Southridge in the long run. But I believe in the future.
So that's why I'm getting ready.
I'm seventy-five years old, so.
To the restaurant.
I really did this as a kind of a labor of love, and I said, well, I wanna do something that's gonna be good for the town, and, uh, and that's where I'm at.
I, I, I think, again, uh, you're a businessman and I'm a businessman. We're gonna spend seven, eight million dollars on the airport. You know, it, it's gonna be different, people that wanna come, uh, visit, spend the night, you know, that's, that's, you know, sometimes you can't have, you can't find a room down in the hotel, it's all full. Either here or Sturridge, whatever. I think that's a, that's a good opportunity, it'd be like a special, you know, like you can put your own price, nobody can compete with you, you know?
It may be, and maybe it can be designed, when I design it, uh, I wanna try to keep as much originality to the building inside and out as possible. So, uh, I've been studying it and, um, but that's something if we did, if we did do apartments, high-end apartment, nice, very nice apartments, granite, the whole thing, everything. And then you could use that if you decided to not rent it as apartments and go to a B and B, well, it's like a suite, basically. And these are all one-bedroom suites, it's not, it's not, uh, multi, multi-bedrooms. So one, uh, two apartments on each floor, the second and third floor, which give four apartments. And that's, but it's a good question about the restaurant, you're saying about that noise level and so forth. Uh, but again, if it was a B and B, then you, if you had a restaurant down below, you'd be having noise upstairs also. So there's, there's a way to, there's systems today that you can take that sound away.
So I wanna, I wanna move this along a little bit. Councilor Steves?
Um, yeah, just two quick things. One is first of all, thanks for, uh, for sticking the harpoon in this question. Uh, I was thinking, you know, I've talked to a few people about, and I was talking to a couple of people in the last couple of days, about, not specifically about that property, but I know that there's some interest in town about having like some sort of an Indian place, some sort of an Indian restaurant. Uh, but also I was curious about-
If you have anyone, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you, you know of anyone that has that inclination to it, because I'm happy to lease the property, build a suit, whatever.
Unfortunately, I, I personally do not, but maybe you can-
No, but if anybody knows of anybody that's interested in some type of venture, I'm willing to work with them.
Thank you.
And the other question is to Peg, um, since we're talking about this property, I was curious also, if you've heard anything, um, about somebody trying to want to do something with that sovereign, because that's been vacant for a while and it's getting-
Santander?
Santander, really.
I heard something.
It's been purchased.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Another local bank has purchased it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, we gotta hurry this up a little bit so the TPW can start working.
Yes, so one last comment, if you are serious about your suggestions about transportation and wanting to see an exit onto the Pike or wherever, we're in the midst of a regional planning exercise, it's called, um, Imagine 2050. And we need feedback from everybody about what they could see for our community. When I suggested to CMRC that that's one of the things we'd like, I didn't, I didn't feel, I didn't feel like they took me seriously. If they hear it from everybody, maybe they'll start to take us seriously. So I'll make sure that I send that link out far and wide for everybody to fill out surveys and get their feedback.
Thank you.
I don't know if everybody remembers fifty-six, that was gonna come all the way down to the Southbridge. It started, Spencer came across, that was gonna go all the way to New Hampshire. And then, I don't know what happened, I guess funding probably dropped you or whatever, but that was, uh, a lot of children.
They're about to go to jail.
All right. So Mr. Cormier, thank you so much for reinvesting into our town, in your town, so thank you. All right, all those in favor? Posed, unanimous. Ten, number four, motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor? Zero, thank you.